I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's have a moment of silence. Placido.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public conference of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trans, the Record, the Messenger, Westminster Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, the Division of Warwick and Westmilk at TB 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, the Town Hall, Township Library, and all districts. Rule called, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Seidwitz. Mrs. Jergensen.
Here.
Mrs. Ricon.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Maydite.
Here.
Mrs. Markward. Mr. Lippie.
There.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Dr. Fanari, the Superintendent's Report.
All right, members of the Board, tonight's Superintendent's Report is going to be the presentation of the preliminary budget for the 2024-2025 school year, so you're welcome to, want to sit out in the audience so that you can see if you're comfortable to sit and watch the presentation. On the table, you also have notes, slide notes pages, so that if you later on at the end of the presentation have questions, please feel free to post them to Mr. Schultz and to myself. Give us a second to turn it up.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we're going to be presenting the preliminary budget. I want to thank Mr. Schultz and his team for working so diligently on preparing this budget for our review. I also want to thank the entire administrative team who really helped us from late November into December compiling the data that is going to be presented to you tonight in this budget. There are a number of slides that will bounce back from expenditures to operations to, sorry, the revenue, and we're going to explain that as we move along. Okay, so the first thing we'd like to do is to present the highlights of our budget. First and foremost, the budget is aligned to the district goals and strategic plan. We utilize a needs versus wants approach, which we've been discussing both in committees and at this board table for several months. What we wanted to do is to ensure that our dollars were really focused on teaching and learning and making sure that the whole organization systemically is also sustained. Reductions, as I've probably said a million times in this board book, will recognize the statement that the reductions are intended to impact the classroom last, meaning that you're not going to see major sweeping cuts in staff for a number of reasons that we will get to, but I wanted to make sure that it's very clear that this budget was crafted with a lot of thought and energy going into it from all of those who contributed. Staffing, we have a real allocation of our funds in order to support the instructional programs, which goes back to that impacting the classroom last. Our decisions based on staffing are based on enrollment and class size considerations, and maintaining the current level of staffing overall while addressing anticipated needs for the 2024-2025 school year. You will see that there are program improvements included in this budget. You'll also see that support services efficiencies are part of the budget itself, and for those of you that have been watching our federal funds, you know that the SIR federal funds, the grant funds, are due to expire in September of this coming school year, so we all school districts in the state of New Jersey who received these funds were charged with ensuring that any positions that were part of the, that were paid for using those SIR funds were absorbed into the local budget if, in fact, we felt they were needed to move our programs forward. So a couple of things with that, we have .5 Encore FTE or full-time equivalent teacher positions that have been paid for out of our grant funding, but we are going to ensure that all five of our elementary schools start off with a .5 Encore teacher that is funded now locally. Any other funds, for example, you'll see that supplemental Encore for Title I eligible schools will then come out of the Title I grant, which has been happening already, but we needed to absorb the positions that were in those SIR funds that are gone away. Another thing that our district replenishes, because we have our one-to-one program, are crumb load costs. So crumb load costs that were funded through the SIR monies are now part of the local-funded budget. The construction of the 2024-25 budget includes the use of $128,539 of bank cap and also $562,769 in healthcare adjustment, which will extend. The tax levy in this budget is $64,322,721, which is an increase of $1,938,983 for 3.11%. We will also be explaining that as we go along. As far as the content of our instructional program, we're continuing to fund state mandated programs, new drifters, learning standards alignment, and curriculum revision. For example, our math program and curriculum revision, our math program and professional development, which is always ongoing, as you know, this is our first year in 2023-24. It's our first year of the Eureka Math Square program. We are, of course, continuing to fund that program as necessary in 2024-25. You've also heard from our Education Department that we are looking for our next English language arts program, and that program's identification and professional development that goes along with it will impact our budget for the next school year. However, we would like to point out that the district was fortunate enough to get a little over $400,000 in stabilization aid, which we are going to lightly put towards that MIALE program, so it's a bit of revenue that we were fortunate enough to get that will help us fund that program. The NJSLA, which is the State Assessment Program, NJSLA readiness, we are funding, we're continuing to fund the I Ready Diagnostic and Formative Assessment, our professional development through Compromat, and curriculum alignment for middle and high school mathematics course sequence. We're also in this budget, we are also considering scheduling efficiencies at all schools to ensure alignment between staffing and programs, and sustainability and operational improvements, such as the Hurry Wind Lake Window Project, that has been a point of our operational discussions for quite some time, and also the high school support there has been baked in there. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schultz for this next slide.
It's been no secret that the district has been really hit hard with S2 cuts ever since it was implemented back in 2018-2019, and through 2017 and 2018 as a baseline to show we received over $14.6 million in state aid that year, and ever since then, it's been steadily declining, some years worse than others. To last year, we received $5,571,000. This year, we only lost $81,537. So for all intents and purposes, it's been a pretty, it's pretty flat cut for this year compared to last year when we lost over a million, and some other school years where we've lost upwards of $2 million each year. Here's the budget comparison for last year's opening budget and the 2024-25 proposed budget. So the operating budget last year totaled $74,545,415. The proposed budget for this year is $75,118,929. That's a $573,000 increase, which translates to .77%. The breakdown by the program areas, as you see, special programs, which includes our special education, that increased by $62,611. Regular education, that increased by $144,224. Tuition, we actually have some good news issue with PCTI, where we have a tuition adjustment of over $300,000, so that's a big piece of why that went down. And also, one of our charter school students that we're currently paying to send out has enrolled in the Westmilkford School District, so he'll be coming back next year. So that's the tuition sending out, and I know Dr. Resta is also working on trying to bring some students back in the district, so that's a big help as well. Speech OTPT, extra services and related services, it's a pretty consistent number. Child study teams, we had some increases, we've had some staffing changes over the last year or so, so that's about 4.88% for $114,000 based on the salary increases for next year. General administration, one of the items, the biggest piece of that that increased it was our phone system, where we are currently working on a phone audit. There was an item in the budget last year that we had to account for this year, so that's the biggest piece of that increase. And in the school administration, the increase is the new position that we posted for Highland Academy for the assistant principal position. So that is the bulk of that increase, is the why school administration went up 8.08%. Central services, that went down 2.4%. Biggest part, biggest piece of that is some salary changes, some new people who have come in, some breakage of some retirees and some new hires. Operations and maintenance, pretty consistent with last year as well, it only went up $79,670. Student transportation, we're really working on fine-tuning in transportation. We've had to outsource a lot of our special ed runs due to the driver shortage, so we have to increase in the amount that we've been sending out for special ed transportation, but also we've adjusted for that on the salary due to the driver shortage, so it's kind of a wash. Hopefully, that will get some drivers to just come in and start working for the district, and then we can work on scaling back some of those outsource runs. Employee benefits, that's always a big number, that always changes and impacts how much it goes up or down. For this year, projected it's going to go up $964,236. We actually got great news on the health benefit premiums, where it's a lower percentage than we've been receiving in the past, but that's coupled with the fact that a lot of employees have changed to the Chapter 44 or EHP claim, so they are actually paying less of a contribution towards the health insurance, even though the premiums aren't much different. So we're working on the increase of the health benefit premium, and coupled with that, we see about 5.92% increase for the health benefits. Over the past few years, we've ranged from 18%, 11%, so this year, it's actually a pretty favorable number that we're looking at for next year. Other expenditures includes everything that wasn't included above district-wide, on smaller areas, other salary areas, or district-wide areas of instruction. Facilities is our capital outlay. We don't have as many projects going on this year, because we are still working on the projects that were going on last year, and also we've had some transition in the facilities department, where Mr. Glenda started, and I'm also new, so we're pulling the land in the district and evaluating the needs of the district. That pretty much sums up for the operating budget, and then special revenue is an amount that we anticipate to get for IDDA and our title loan grants. It's usually combined with about 85% of what we received in the prior years, the general rule fund for the budget. And then debt service, that's our sub payments for debt that we have each year, that's going up $14,250 compared to what we paid for last year.
Okay, so the next slide is just looking at our operating budget expenditures by percentage. Now, what you're going to see in these percentages is that each categories include everything, salary, materials, all of those things that we're going to break out differently later, but for right now, the categories here include special programs, which is approximately 9.7% of our budget. Regular education is 25.3% of the budget. Tuition is 4.3% of our budget. The speech OTPT, extra services is 2.2% of the budget. Child study teams is 3.3% of the budget. General administration is 2% of the budget. School administration is 3.2% of the budget. Central services, 1.6% of the budget. Operations and maintenance is 9% of the budget. Student transportation is 8.8% of the budget. Employee benefits is 23% of the budget, and other expenditures, 6.8% of the budget, with facilities coming in at .7% of the budget.
On the other side, we have the revenues, which totals for all funds, $76,921,215 is the total budget. As you see, the tax levy is the bulk of it, 83.62% of it is the tax levy. The budgeted fund balance, that's roughly 4.06%, so we have $1,393,863, which was our ordinary excess surplus from last, from the June 30th audit, so we have to include that into this budget, and we also have included $1,732,163 to bring the total fund balance used for the budget up to $3,126,026. So the majority of that fund balance we're using was an allowable adjustment we had last year for an extraordinary aid that we received that exceeded what we budgeted to bring in. We budgeted $800,000 last year, we received over $2.1 million, so we're using that for support next year's budget, as well as some of the supplemental stabilization aid we received in the spring of last year. So the other items, factor in the district is state and federal aid, which totals 8.42% of the budget. That has been obviously decreasing with all the S2 cuts over the last few years. Debt service, that part of the debt service aid that we receive, debt service tax levy. Special projects, there's special revenue fund. This leaves everything else that's not included, not broken out in the other categories. And also, we have an amount budgeted as revenue for transportation fees, where we work with other districts, where we work on the buses for booming and also for Kinalan, where we repair their buses, and it's a revenue source for the district. And then we also have the reserve withdrawal that we're using to fund some of the capital projects, including the UGL Window Project. Oh, and state, state federal aid, right, is 8.42% of the budget, that's our normal state aid, our title loan grants, and IDDA.
Okay, so so far, we've shown you what the operations costs are, and now this is the revenue distribution, so you're going to see that some of these categories are extremely similar, which is exactly what we want to see. This is just to drive the point home that in our budget, the salaries are 57% of our budget, benefits are 23% of our budget, and everything else that we do is 20% of the budget. So we are a very people-oriented organization, we're probably the largest employer in our town, and as far as the way we spend our dollars, we want to make sure that it's clearly understood that, you know, we're really putting the dollars together in approval manner so that we can ensure that we support all of our schools and programs, but you know, that benefits cost, when you look at it, is more than what it costs us to run the rest of the district, aside from the salaries. So it's just an interesting perspective to take a look at.
Here's an interesting pie chart that shows the breakout of all of our expenditures, based on a dollar now and in proportions of all the other areas included in the budget. So the biggest piece of it is obviously our general education, that's $19,028,454. It's hard to tell. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so the special programs, that's our special education, that's $7,304,010. Okay, $3.2, $3,231,502, that's the tuition that we pay out, that I mentioned earlier, we're getting a good-sized break this year, over $300,000 for the PCTI tuition adjustment. All right, speech OT services is the 1.676,818. You have CST expenses for salaries and the other services needed, is $2,462,014. Yep, general administration is $1,477,896, that's the administration for adult school buildings. The school administration as well is $2,398,875 compared. When you look at the admin compared to all the other areas of the budgets, they're big numbers, but they don't look as big compared to some of the other sections or expenditures for the district. And central services, which includes the business office, some of our technology and IT, that's $1,175,382. And operations and maintenance is $6,782,188. That's custodial, groundskeeping, and some of our required maintenance, that we need for the district. And transportation is $6,634,703. That includes all transportation salaries and salaries, parts that they need down in the garage and all the runs that we have to outsource. And then benefits is $17,257,257, which, as I mentioned, is a better, we've got a better number on the increase for this year, but it's still a gigantic portion of the budget. Oh, and the other expenditures is $5,126,573. That is everything that's not included, sorry, in these other categories, which are more predominated in the budget. And a capital outlay, facilities is $563,139. $450,000 of that is what we have budgeted for the UGL Window and Door Project. We included the first part of that project last year in the budget, $450,000 as well, and we applied for a road grade, which we did not receive, so the funding for this year is to fund the other pieces that is anticipated to be needed for that project.
Okay, the next slide that you'll see here is our salaries by category. The percentages are on the axis to the left, and you'll notice that the columns are blue and white. The blue level is where the salaries in each category fall against the total, the total is that light gray area, the whityish light gray area. And the very last bar that you'll see is the total for salaries, so that would get us, you know, our 100%, but of that 100%, you'll see the first category is the teacher salaries, which is up over 60%, close to the 70% of the budget, and then to varying degree, you've got instructional aid salaries that are under 10% of the budget, and very, very small is our non-instructional aids. We also have coaches, advisors, and trainers listed there. Next, we have administration, and secretaries follow that, and then operations and maintenance, transportation salaries, and non-affiliated employees. So you get a sense, and really, we did this more for a visual than to give you a sense of dollars and cents, although we have that information, but we wanted to just give you, again, you know, the proportion of salaries and where they fall and how they are, how they play into that total bar.
And on the other side, these are the non-salary expenditures that we have district-wide. This is similar to the slide we covered earlier, with the tuition being over $3 million that we pay out to send students out of the year. Supplies and textbooks is $1,061,953. Purchased educational services is about $1.3 million. Other expenditures is $782,391. Energy costs, which includes our payment for the ESIP debt payment, that's $1.112,516 we subsidized or offset the energy costs due to that debt payment due to the ESIP project we did a few years ago. Our insurance cost is $1,240,901. You know, our health benefit insurance costs have gone, anticipated not to go up as much this year, the core I got from the insurance, which is general insurance for our vehicles, workers' compensation, that's anticipated to go up almost 10 or 11% in total. Facilities, that includes our maintenance, our custodial, groundskeeping, that's $1,180,174. And technology, we have a budget of $582,796 planned for next year. Transportation costs is over $4 million, $4,346,7. And then you get to the benefits, which is $17,257,275. And as I mentioned earlier, that's coupled with the decrease in the employee benefit contribution. Last year, we anticipated, or this current year, we anticipated to receive about $2.9 million for employee contributions. Next year, I'm projecting about $2.7, and depending how many employees switch in the spring when open enrollment starts, it may go down anymore. The premiums for the EHP plans are not much different than the direct access plans, but the requirements for the employees to contribute is much more favorable to employees. And capital outlay, as I mentioned earlier, is predominantly the UGL Window and Door Project, which is $450,000 that we have in the budget, with a total capital outlay of $563,139. And this is the same, same information that I just discussed, but shown differently, which illustrates how big for non-personnel operating costs, how much the benefits are compared to the other areas of the district expenditures. Good, and here's the tax levy increase summary. So for the general fund last year, we had a tax levy of $62,383,738. That number included no bank cap and a health benefit adjustment last year of $1,478,570 that led to a tax levy increase of 4.48%. This year, we're looking at a general fund tax levy of $64,322,721 for an increase of $1,938,983. That includes the bank cap that we have from a budget increase from a couple of years ago that wasn't the full 2% of roughly $128,000, and then $572,000 of a health benefit adjustment. The health benefit adjustment is the same thing as last year, it's just a smaller amount that we are allowed to use for this year. So the total amount for that is $691,308. And a debt service tax levy increased over the last couple of years by $113,407. Over the last four years or so, we had $400,000 to apply to the debt service tax levy due to the high school and map and roof projects coming in under what the referendum amount was. We used the last of that, we used $104,000 last year to offset the debt service tax levy, so we don't have that available anymore moving forward. So that's why it looks like such a big increase, with $293,153 last year to $406,563 this year. The average success home in the district from the tax assistance office, let me know, went up $600 to $243,300 for the average value of a home. Last year, with all the healthcare adjustment, the average tax levy increase was $235.44 for the average home. This year, it's a little less, it's $187,071 projected for the 2024-25 budget, which breaks down to a rough little over $15 per month per household. Overall, when you take, combine the general fund with the debt service tax levy, it's a 3.27% tax levy increase.
Okay, the slide that we have here is a 12-year look, it's basically a trend of what the general fund tax levy looks like. So you'll see it's a very jagged line. Over the years, the district has gone from zero, at a low point, increase in the budget up to last year's 4.48% increase. So, you know, I think this has a lot to do with the federal funding that has been in play and is now no longer in play, and also, you know, the circumstances of overall inflation and the priorities of the district over time with staffing, class sizes, and making sure that, you know, the programs that we had in place were funded accordingly. The one thing that happens when you have a 0% increase over a year or two is it reduces the base of your tax levy, so it takes us more than one or two years. So it's, it takes us, um, more than one or two years to kind of make it up. So as prices go up for all of the services and goods that a district uses, um, the, the base being stagnant for a couple of years impacts your ability to, um, ensure that you can raise the taxes to apply to the school district to keep program where you like it and staffing where you like it. So, um, we didn't have a big increase for last year, it's slightly less this year, but we wanted to give you a sense of what that trend line looks like. Okay, so the budget calendar is something that is dictated by the state of New Jersey, and so tonight, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four is our presentation, uh, for the board's, uh, approval of the preliminary budget. The next thing that happens is honor before March twentieth, the preliminary budget must be submitted to the county office for their review and approval. Um, honor before April twentieth, uh, we advertise the preliminary budget. Honor before April thirtieth, and we do have a board meeting on April thirtieth, the public, um, budget hearing will occur. Uh, and that is the board's opportunity, once we get the budget back from the county office, to look at that budget and to, um, adopt the approved budget. And then May, honor before May second, the budget has to be posted to the district website, no later than forty-eight hours after the public budget hearing and adoption. So while there is time to discuss, uh, you know, pieces of this budget, we do have to adhere to the state timeline. Okay, so the user-friendly budget will be posted to the district website once the preliminary budget has been submitted and approved to the executive county superintendent, and the final budget has been approved by the Westmore Board of Education. Um, board members, Mr. Schultz and I are happy to entertain any questions you may have at this point. Um, this presentation will be posted to the website for the public to review and view any lack of, but questions for board members. If you go back to slide six, sure. You got it?
Yeah.
The bar graph, the bar graph. So which for salary?
Dr. David.
Yeah, I'm reading.
Um, I just have a question, when this budget was put together, were the class sizes of the electa classes at the high school taken into consideration? So we're not going to be running classes of four and five student cycle?
Well, I think it's going to depend on the type of classes that we're talking about.
I'm talking about electors, I'm not talking about AP.
Okay.
I'm talking about the electa classes. Um, I have to tell you, and I know it's preliminary, but the three point eleven percent, I'm concerned, I was concerned with the number last year also. We have people in this community who really suffer, and, and I mean, the economy has really hurt them, and if, if we can do anything to reduce this, I would like to see that done. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question about this one. Special programs is special education. Tuition is also special education.
It includes PCTI, but it's, it's also our special education program for tuition paid, but it includes PCTI as well.
Speech, OT, PCT, the extra services, that's special education.
Right.
And child studies is special education. Thank you.
What, what is the open enrollment for the healthcare?
It's in back.
It's in back, yes. So we'll have, we'll be voting on this at about the same time you start getting numbers, so that could affect the budget for that. I think the salaries are in line with the current contracts that they are now?
They're, you know, the current contract, as they're, like, we bumped everyone up a step from where they are currently to account for some of that, without, you know, negotiations happening, so. We bumped everyone up a step, and then some of the, some of the account lines, where everyone was at the top of the guy, I updated an additional adjustment for potential negotiations. Open enrollment, it's usually nice, so the public budget here is equal thirty, it's usually after, after that point.
Do we have an idea of how, how many of our staff are complete percentage, of how, how many are in the new, in the HSP plan or the?
EHP.
Yeah.
I can get you the actual numbers for it, but it's over the last two years, it's almost a fifty-fifty split between the direct, direct access to the EHP. We still have some employees in the official plan, but over the last, first couple of years of the EHP plan, not a whole lot of people switched over. But over the last few, as I pointed out, that, that the plan really were what they were, it was good for people's needs, more and more people switched over. And I think the top amount of contribution from the end plan is seven point two percent of salary. Meanwhile, the old, the chapter seventy-eight plan is a percentage of the premium, so the premium is increasing, the contribution is increasing, but for the EHP plan, people's salaries at the maximum is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so anyone who's making over that amount, you're capped at seven point two percent of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And I'm, I'm guessing that we're getting close to not having a traditional plan for real. Anybody, because we don't, because that's, that's a grandfather thing.
Right.
That's going to go away at some point, and we're probably getting close to that.
Right, that's very probably, and I've, I've probably actually been in a contract, but people weren't allowed to join that, and people have retired, or any search of the plans, so that's, that's.
Which will be a savings on that end of that, because that's.
Yeah, that's pretty good, you're retired, and they're back.
Thank you.
Sure.
To pick it up off that, so the more people that go into the.
EHP?
Right, the EHP, the more money we have to pay.
So the, the premiums aren't much different, they're slightly less than the direct access plans, but due to the chapter forty-four stipulations, the contribution is much more favorable to employees. So we pick up a lot of that difference. So a couple of years ago, my predecessor, Francisco, had a three point two million as an offset for the health benefit costs. Last year, for this current year, I think it went around two point nine by the end of the year, and for next year, I'd be surprised if we got two point seven in total contributions for the employees.
But the employees are still contributing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's still a contribution, it's all coming into that.
Based on the, uh.
Less and less, I would say.
Yeah, yes.
On the, on the benefits, Mike, can we get a breakout as to what's, the benefits and what is contracted?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the majority of it, I, I can say just a breakout of that. Uh, also includes, uh, the provision of the contract district-wide for people who opt out of the health benefit plan, because it's a two thousand dollar payment here for the whole year, so it also includes, we did that, so I'd like you to bring that back.
This is, this is great, this is, that's why I'm saying so, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
We'd like very much.
It's a good thing for us, visual.
Not yourself.
Thank you. Thank you very.
Mr. Schultz.
Put it in white and square.
Could you let me know how many people opt out of the house? Just curious, or let us know. How many people opt out, I'd ask you to let us know.
Oh.
Okay, so now on to public comment. So all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of thirty minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the registered document and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, or a participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to refer to the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mr. Schultz, does anyone sign up?
No, I'm not.
Anyone wishing to speak?
It's on, okay. Hello, my name is Black Thursday Goff. I actually have a question on thirty-fourth Street, I have a question as well. I had a question regarding the budget presentation, I don't know if I was allowed to ask questions when the board members were asking. Um, it was regarding slide five, I just want to make sure that as an individual is understanding the presentation quality. I do appreciate, by the way, how you were, um, highlighting the budget context, how it was very positive. I appreciate how you prepared the needs and wants of the district, I felt that that was, um, very good for me to hear, and I felt that the presentation itself was very positive. The only question I have regarding slide five, um, the current budget, of course, or the post-budget, is where you're showing the changes from one year to the next. I want to make sure that I understood that's what the costs were being made, so a negative percentage of this was a positive. I just want to make sure, for example, you're showing, um, the facilities, how it went down forty-five percent, I'm assuming that's because we have, um, the facilities have changed, that's a large number that I saw, it's like negative forty-five. And then I saw one that was the, which in particular was the, the school administration, about eight percent. So what I was just trying to see is where the costs were being made, that was the only thing I, that I didn't understand, a hundred percent, a little bit more about that, please.
Good evening, I have a comment about the budget. At my daughter's AP meeting, I was getting a report that should be printed in color, both printed in black and white, which means the report got done professionally. I'm asking you, please consider making a color printer slash copy of the line item to the budget. So a report from the child study team that needs to convey important information on how our children's growth is able to be done properly and can convey the message that it needs to be done. Because it's very hard when you're sitting at a child study team meeting, and you're giving something in black and white, oh, well, this is supposed to be yellow, and this is supposed to be blue. We really need a color printer for the child study team, so our reports will be done, and given to us professionally. Thank you very much. Your name and, oh, my son, uh, thirty-seven, hi, you're off.
Thank you.
Hi there, Brittany Stevenson, three oh seven, Ridgefield, Westmore, New Jersey. Thank you, Dr. Finari and Mr. Schultz, that was a great budget, a really extensive report. Um, the highlights were wonderful, it's nice to hear the highlights, but there wasn't a talk of the cuts, which is confusing to the community when we hear the news that there is eight hundred thousand dollars being cut from our budget. The four hundred thousand in stabilization for ELI is really great, because there's new ELA standards coming, so that's important, that we are up to par with the rest of New Jersey. But when, well, we, I just wanted to say that Senator Bucow was really a big asset in getting the stabilization aid for us, and thank goodness for him. When the Highlander Education Foundation spoke to him, he mentioned that it was eight hundred thousand dollars. I'm just curious, where the other four hundred, something thousand dollars went. There was no one to talk of security vestibles, which is a big concern of mine, um, especially in our elementary schools, and the fact that our world is a pretty scary place. PCTI went down three hundred thousand dollars, which is wonderful, but quite frankly, out of three million, that is killing us. It was not discussed or put with the fact that transportation is four million dollars, and that includes busing to PCTI, as well as other out of district schools, such as COVID. Um, we need to really work at keeping our students here in Westmore, as you know, I have been a big proponent of that. We cannot really change teacher salary, we don't really want to do anything with that. So let's look at what we can look at, and that is keeping our students here in Westmore. A new funding formula is coming, it's unknown and scary. What the new funding formula will be, we don't know, if they're going to cut us more, or should we pass where we are. I'm hopeful that more can advocate for our districts and help let's later understand Westmore's uniqueness. So I would like to encourage all of you to join Highlander Education Foundation, become a member, and try to keep our students here in Westmore. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak?
So I just want to clarify one thing, um, Miss Stevenson, I think you said, um, that we will be cut over eight hundred thousand dollars. It's actually not that amount, it's eighty, eighty-one thousand dollars, yeah, so I just wanted to make that. Close that.
A little bit different.
Okay, uh, Dan, can I have a motion to close public comments?
I would have to close, uh, public comment.
Second. Thank you, and Dr. Finari, any?
No, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dr. Finari, any changes to the agenda?
Okay, so, um, board, if you take a look at personnel motion number twelve, we inadvertently left off one of our nurses. Barbara, oh, that is on, sorry, so H six, at the bottom. Um, Barbara Corvus Davis, we inadvertently left off an hourly rate of fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
What was the number again?
Fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. I, excuse me, I thought this employee resigned and went to another district, this is for her last.
Okay. You repeat the number.
Fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Sure. Yes?
That's it.
Okay. They have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented, repeat correction. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mrs. Twy, activation?
I'd like to approve items one through six, as I present items one through six, for approval.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? That's Mrs. Romano.
Number three and number four. It says, uh, non-employment educational services, um, is to provide online, like, virtual school. I guess my question is, is this for the remainder of this school year only? Is this for a certain amount of time, is this? I know it says for the school year. I don't, yeah, I don't know anything about that, like, what is the? I don't, yeah, I don't know anything about that, like what is the, this is something that we?
So receives that require home instruction, uh, because of whatever medical or special need. Uh, so number 3 is to approve the agency that are to provide the instruction. And then the, um, dollar amount in number 4 is to provide a student for the service for the length of time that they will require.
And so this company will do all of the subjects required?
Well, as per the requirements for home instruction, so the core components of the services.
And does this start already, or I suppose it'll start tomorrow?
I would say yes.
Thank you.
You're up.
Anyone else? Okay, Sian, no, please.
Mrs. Twy?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Lippy?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Doy?
Hi, it's Sian, number 6, and yes to this.
Mrs. Akon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Van Doy, personnel?
I'd like to move items 1 through number 20 on the agenda under personnel.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
We move, we move it all to your 1, 20?
The question on 19 and 20?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Girls' flag football. We spoke in, what we created, we spoke about, um, that there will be two volunteers, I think we have one listed, and did we receive the, um, the breakdown of the 120 hours of funding?
Uh, yeah, that should have been in your Friday update, I provided in the text of the update from, uh, or athletic coaches.
Yes, I apologize, I'll just.
Anyone else? Sian, no, call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Van Doy?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Twy?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Akon?
Yes.
Mr. Lippy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lippy, operations finance?
Uh, I'd like to move operations finance, um, number 1, but, uh, number 1.
Second. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippy?
Yes.
Mrs. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Akon?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Doy?
Yes.
Mrs. Twy?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Okay, back to public comment. Okay?
Before, um, before we go to that, what were we going to do, first reading the policies or is that for the next?
No, that's next week. That's just personal. So public comment. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the registered provider and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone signed up for the second?
No, there's none.
Anyone wishing to speak?
I have other questions. We'll just keep going.
Right, this time I'll actually write my name. Dr. Versicoff, 34th Center Street. I had a question about the professional development day for next Monday. I did ask it long, but I did just want, again, it's just some clarification. Um, it's in regards to iReady. I think professional development day for next Monday, the 18th, is for iReady. Um, the only reason I'm asking that is, um, it's not just with my child, I've been noticing it with a few parents that have been coming to me, um, I mean, to other friends, family, teachers, staff, whatever it may be, have been coming to us, and I've just been kind of hearing from the great crowd, even through socials, um, that some of the students are struggling with iReady. I know they're adjusting, but even for my child who didn't have iXL, have any of the programs, she particularly, she particularly loves iReady, she knows what's going on, and she loves that it's very rewarding, she loves the positive reinforcement, she loves that she gets a lot of stars at the end, she kind of competes against herself, she does really like it. But what I have been noticing with her, even though she went up in her diagnostic assessment, she went up over that 50th threshold, I have to do a little bit of research on it myself, um, we should look at 55, so I was proud of her for that, it's not testing her appropriately. So last weekend, she was, I'd like her to do maybe just an hour or so every weekend, and she appeared very frustrated, and I said, what's going on? And she's like, this is too easy. So for example, she's in first grade, so she should be learning a lot of, um, core reading, phonics, things like that. And it was testing her on letter symbols, like N is N, U is N, D is D. And she was like, no, this is too easy. So I looked at the top of her page, and it said reading level AA, and she's at reading level H. So I can understand her frustration, she's just clicking through the modules. And that's what I've been hearing, I didn't experience it myself, so that's where I can see her frustration, and I can see why children, not even in the elementary level, that I know we're just testing this at the elementary level, but those that may be at the middle school level may become frustrated because they're not being tested at the appropriate grade level. So when I did ask her teachers, she was very receptive, she was looking into it for me. But I just wanted confirmation that our district in particular is able, the teachers have that capability to go in and see what, not just their diagnostic, but be able to go in and say, hey, we shouldn't be at reading level AA, that's early kindergarten, or whoever, however that children may be assessed at that moment. I know in particular, she was at level AA beginning of kindergarten, that they can go in and change that for her, because I know she wanted to stop right there, she did not want to keep going, because it was too easy. So again, that leads into my question about professional development, who is coming in? Is it an iReady team? Is it going to be teachers within the district, maybe outside the district, that's coming in and saying, hey, this is what we've done, this is how it's been successful? Because I don't want us to, you know, say, okay, that's it, we're not going to do trial terror. I want iReady to be successful, because I can see how it's worked in other districts, like Montville, that's doing really well with it. So I want us to be successful. I don't want us to kind of put all our eggs in one basket and say, okay, that's it, we fold, we give up, because I know the students, and I don't want the staff frustrated by that. So my main question is, who's coming in, who's doing the professional development, and how can the teachers have a discussion to make sure that it's successful? Thank you. I feel like I did not try with that comment last week. I'm so nervous for the last one.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sian, no? Post all the comments?
I'll make you. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we do not, you do not have an accepted session today, so that'd be a non-appointment. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.